Good evening. And welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the month of June 2019. The Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. this evening to discuss legal and real estate-related matters pertaining to property maintenance issues, which we had a basically continuation of our discussion from last Monday's work session. It's great to see everybody here for our budget hearing. Great. Never seen such big, such a big crowd. It's amazing. I would now ask our Township Manager and Secretary Dave Berman to please call a roll.
Mr. Emilio.
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. McCarrity.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Lewis. Here. We all please rise and join our Deputy Chief Joe Hagan in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone would like a copy of the agenda that are up here at the podium, now turn to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a proclamation to fourth and fifth grade winners of Delaware County's 24 Math Competition, which we swept. And to make that, to present that proclamation this evening is Sixth Ward Commissioner and Vice President of the Board Larry Holmes.
Mr. President, thank you. And if I could call up here with me Maya Louis and Sophia King and Jimmy Boyle and Giordano Emilio. And if I could, on behalf of all four of them, thank you all for being here tonight for their proclamation. My mother and her mother were schoolteachers, and if I had 50% of the courage that they had, I would have been a teacher myself. Instead, I went into politics, and while some of that is a drag, a lot of it is very rewarding, and times like these are the most rewarding. So, I'm gonna, you'll learn more about this game 24 in this proclamation, but if I were to say to these four budding geniuses to my left, the following four numbers, 72, 9, I'm sorry, 72, 8, 2, and 6, how quickly can you raise your hands and tell me that you know the answer to that? Now, for the rest of you who are all looking there and saying, "What?", but they all said immediately to themselves, "72 divided by 8, times 2, plus 6, equals 24." And that's what 24 is, and that's what these four children won countywide. And I will say this before I do the proclamation, just one very, very extraordinary quote that I found about mathematics. Pure mathematics is the world's best game. It is more absorbing than chess, more of a gamble than poker, and lasts longer than Monopoly. It's free, it can be played anywhere. Archimedes himself did it in a bathtub. So whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havreford, oh, I'm sorry, before I go on, I do want to call out a few people that are in the audience. I want to welcome Jen and Michael Boyle, the parents of Jimmy Boyle. I'd like to welcome Mike and Jessica King and Fran Whiteside, the parents of Sophia King. I'd like to welcome Annie and Jordan Emilio, the parents of Giordano, and Wendy and Andy Lewis, the parents of Maya Louis. Also with us, luminaries from the school district, Dr. Nesbit, the STEM Coordinator for the School District of Havreford, Principal Jabari Whitehead from Chatham Park, and Principal Beth Mastrocola from the Cooper Town School. So if I may, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havreford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in our community, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wished to applaud Havreford Elementary School students Maya Louis, Sophia King, Jimmy Boyle, and Giordano Emilio for sweeping the top four positions at the Delaware County 24 Math Competition held on May 30, 2019, and whereas Pennsylvania inventor Robert Sun sought to teach children the relationship between numbers through an educational math game, and the result of his efforts was the invention of the 24 Game, a mathematics teaching tool that engages students from every socioeconomic background to become critical thinkers and problem solvers. And whereas, players of 24 are given four single- or double-digit numbers and must add, subtract, multiply, or divide using each number only once to equal 24. Players must give the solution, then must provide each of the various equations that derive the answer 24. And whereas, according to inventor Sun, knowing the answer is always 24 alleviates a classic brand of math anxiety, getting the right answer, and instead puts the emphasis on the process and patterns, what I like to call "the method behind the math." And whereas the Havreford School District uses the 24 Game as part of their fourth and fifth grade math curriculum in the district's five elementary schools, each year a 24 competition is held at Cooper Town, Chatham Park, Manoa, Chestnutwald, and Manoa, with a fourth and fifth grade champion being recognized. And whereas the 10 champions representing the Havreford Township School District then compete against 10 other Delaware County school districts with more than 100 students in the competition sponsored by the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, after several rounds of 24 competition in single and double digits, there was a final, more challenging variable round. And whereas Maya Louis placed first in the countywide 24 competition, Maya will soon be graduating from the fifth grade at Cooper Town Elementary School. Maya enjoys dancing, playing the piano, cooking, golfing, her pets, nature, and playing with her friends. She is funny, witty, curious, smart, and when put to the test, driven and perseverant. I wonder where she gets that from. Whereas Sophia King tied for second in the 24 competition, Sophia is finishing the fourth grade at Manoa Elementary School and is a fun-loving child with a heart of gold. She is well-rounded and excels in all that she puts her mind to, academics and athletics. She is always on the go. This year she was in the school play, played field hockey, floor hockey, basketball, softball, ran track, and plays the viola. Sophia has a love of history and hopes to be an archaeologist one day. I hope someday you will study the dinosaurs that are on this board, Sophia. Whereas Jimmy Boyle tied for second place in the 24 competition, Jimmy is finishing the fifth grade at Chatham Park Elementary School. He has played on local soccer and basketball teams, but his real passion is baseball. Jimmy plays for Brookline and is excited to start the summer tournament season soon. He loves spending time with his friends, family, and especially his little sister Katie. And of course Jimmy loves math and playing 24. And whereas Giordano Emilio earned fourth place in the countywide 24 competition, Giordano is finishing the fifth grade at Chestnutwald Elementary School and enjoys baseball, skiing, and soccer. Giordano has a kind heart and a competitive spirit. He really enjoys math and science, but more than anything, he loves spending time with his family and with his dog, Oreo. His plans for the summer are to play baseball and to spend time at the beach learning how to surf. Hang ten, Giordano. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havreford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates Maya Louis, Sophia King, Jimmy Boyle, and Giordano Emilio for their significant achievements and commends the School District of Havreford for the fine education afforded to all of our students from kindergarten through the 12th grade. Proclaimed this 10th day of June 2019, the Township of Havreford Board of Commissioners. And while we invite the parents and the school district luminaries up for pictures, I would just ask for one more round of applause to recognize the accomplishments of these extraordinary young students. If I could just invite the parents, the principals, our coordinator from the Havreford School District, and our official photographer. Great.
I think we all want to be on this side.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
Yeah, you guys better get out of here.
Yeah, we gotta pull this thing, right?
Here.
As we wait for Commissioner Holmes to return, I don't want to embarrass my colleagues, but I was the only one that paid attention to the memo to dress down for the summer months, so I look like I'm the only one that dressed down. That's because we all agreed that we would dress casually, but I'm the only one dressed casually. I guess we can proceed with Commissioner Holmes. Let's start with, go back to the Agenda Item Number Three, which is the Township Auditor Update, Ross Anderson. You can borrow your tie, Ross. You got the memo.
I had to make sure you wanted it. It feels a lot better without that tie. I reviewed the spinners and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction.
Thank you, Ross. We'll now turn our attention to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Citizens Forum. We've allotted 20 minutes for registered speakers and also 20 minutes for anyone who wants to speak on an Agenda Item. So the way it works, if you call the Township Manager's office, you can register as a speaker. And if you register as a speaker, you have the opportunity to speak on any topic. It doesn't have to be Agenda-related. And then the other 20 minutes allotted for Citizens Forum, you're allowed to speak on anything related or anything on the Agenda. For anyone here to speak on the Brookline School, or the property maintenance issues, or the Dragon Queen Storytime, you will have the opportunity to do so under Agenda Item Number 18, which is a continuation of the Citizens Forum. I can assure you, we'll stay as long as we have to to hear every last comment and question. So now turn our attention to registered speakers, given three minutes to speak. Our Township Manager Dave Berman will give you 15 seconds, a cue, to wrap up your remarks, two minutes and 45 seconds. They go that long. So the first speaker this evening is the Chair of our Human Relations Committee, Jen Leith.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. I appreciate it. The Human Relations Commission felt it important to provide an update since the last time I was here as Chair, which was in September of 2018, when we proposed two township-wide events. One was a Town Hall on Diversity and Inclusion, and two was an Implicit Bias Program. I'm pleased to report that both of these were well-attended and have led the path for our work over the past six to seven months. In particular, since the Town Hall in October of 2018, the HRC has had an opportunity to meet with the School District of Havreford Township as a follow-up to the Town Hall. It was a productive meeting where we learned a good bit about basis, belonging, and socio-cultural identities in schools. This is the work that the district is engaged in, and we're really pleased that the district is taking such a thorough and active approach to assess, gauge, and improve the understanding and acceptance of all students within the district. We applaud them for their commitment to continued learning and dialogue around acceptance, diversity, and equity in our school community. Most recently, we had a positive meeting with the Havreford Township Chief of Police, John Viola, and Deputy Chief Hagan to learn about the context of some of the police data shared at the Town Hall in October of 2018. During the meeting, we discussed the annual training and continued professional development of officers and how the HRC can provide information and guidance on future training opportunities, particularly related to cultural diversity, racial justice, and implicit bias. Additionally, the HRC and the Police Department will partner on a forum in the fall of 2019, which will be a community conversation format. Details on the program are in the planning stages and will be shared with all of you. Materials related to the Town Hall and the Implicit Bias Program can be found on the HRC webpage within the Havreford Township website for those wishing to review the information shared during those programs. At the Fall 2019 Annual Meeting of the Havreford Township Partnership for Economic Development, members of the HRC will provide a presentation to attendees on up-to-date and relevant information regarding various anti-discrimination laws that apply to businesses operating in Havreford Township. It will also serve as an opportunity to discuss ways business owners can implement actions to foster an inclusive environment for customers and employees. Additionally, this opportunity will help identify how the HRC can provide tools and resources to assist with compliance and actions. We're very appreciative of Jean Angel, the Director, okay, I'll talk faster, the Director of HPED for partnering with us to bring this idea to fruition and for the support of the HPED Board of Directors. Beginning July 1, the HRC will have a new Chairperson and a new Vice Chair. I will be passing the baton after two years as Chair, can I finish, to Jason Conway. Joanne Gussman, our current Vice Chair, will be succeeded by Kathy Dawson, who is here this evening. You want to raise your hand? Thank you, Kathy. Joanne and I will continue to serve on the HRC through the end of our terms. We both, along with the rest of the HRC members, welcome Kathy and Jason into their new roles. I would like to personally thank all of you as the Commissioners for your support of the HRC, particularly over my two-year tenure as Chair, and in particular, to the Board of Commissioners' vision to establish the Human Relations Commission in Havreford Township. When the HRC was established in 2011, it truly was a message to other communities in Pennsylvania and the greater world that Havreford Township is not a place for intolerance or discrimination. It affirmed that we as community members know to be true, we are a community of people who accept one another, where we value difference, and are not threatened by it. And whether we're talking about the HRC, the HPED, the police, or the public library, Havreford Township is a place to respect and to be tolerant and accepting of different people of different races, ethnicities, gender identities, and sexual orientation. Thank you for your continued commitment to tolerance and embracing diversity. Thank you, guys. Any questions? Thank you, Jen.
We allowed her to go over the three minutes because she is Chair of one of our 14 Boards and Commissions. The next registered speaker, and there are actually four speakers to speak on the Dragon Queen Storytime. I will not be, or this Board will not be responding to specific questions after these speakers present. We'll wait until the end, under Agenda Item Number 18, where everyone will have a chance to ask questions, express concerns, state their position, and at the conclusion, we will address the questions that everyone has raised collectively, either through Phil Goldsmith, the President, myself, our Solicitor, or any member of this Board will respond. So, I would say a couple ground rules, obviously, a three-minute rule and to speak, and I know emotions are running high on both sides of this issue, so I'd ask that we have respectful and civil dialogue and process here, respect other people's viewpoints. We don't want to hear people jeering or shouting down anybody while they're trying to speak or making any kind of derogatory comments, and that applies to both sides of this issue. And if it becomes a situation where it is not civil or respectful, we will take appropriate action. So, with that, we ask our first registered speaker on the Dragon Queen Storytime, Lorraine Williams, to please come forward. That's why I have a handy VP here to correct me. Thank you.
It's not, it isn't Drag Queen.
Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Williams. I've been a resident of Havreford Township since 1986. I'm the mother of three grown children and two grandchildren. I am opposed to Drag Queen Storytime, and I would like to cite a letter from the first legal non-binary person in the U.S. In the words of James Shoup, I quote, "As a former member of the transgender community, I urge for the Havreford Township Library not to host any Drag Queen Story Hour events because they are harmful to children. In 2013, I began living and identifying as a transgender woman at the age of 49 after retiring from the Army. Prior to that time, I had never had any exposure to the controversial theory of gender identity. After beginning to take female hormones, I spent a year in Pittsburgh, and while there, I regularly frequented a gay bar that hosted Drag Queen events. None of the behaviors I witnessed from these adult performers are suitable for children, nor is it believable that these highly-sexualized men who dress as women and exaggerate femininity in drug-and-alcohol-fueled environments can suddenly transform into youth educators. Despite being internationally famous for becoming America's first legally non-binary person, this year I returned to my male birth sex. After spending six years immersed in transgenderism and queer theory, I came to realize that my gender transitions had taken place because I was highly suggestible to the idea that my numerous mental health issues were rooted in suppression of my true self. I have since learned that my gender dysphoria diagnosis is incorrect, and that what I have is transvestite disorder with autogynephilia. This means I am sexually aroused by the idea of myself as a female. These drag queens are no different than me. The only difference is they claim to have a female gender identity as I once did too. If I could come to believe that I was a female at age 49 because of exposure to gender ideology, my experience should serve as a cautionary tale against exposing vulnerable youth to such persons. A big part of returning to my male birth sex was to set a better example for children. Doing the right thing is never easy during these times of political correctness, but I hope you will have the courage to take a stand and say no to these harmful Drag Queen events."
15 seconds.
Respectfully submitted, James Shoup, formerly Jamie Shoup. Thank you.
Thank you. The second speaker on the Drag Queen Storytime is Andrew Amrine.
My name is Andrew. I live on Harvard Road. We've lived here since 2014. I love people. This isn't about people. What people do in the privacy of their own home is just that, their privacy. I don't want to talk about people. What I do want to talk about are behaviors and activities that are appropriate for kids and their results. I have two books here to reference, The Hurried Child, Growing Up Too Fast Too Soon, and Boundaries With Kids, What To Say, When To Say It, When To Say Yes, When To Say No, and How To Help Your Child Control Their Lives. Around me, I see what these two books reference, boundaries being broken, kids being hurried to grow up rather than develop at their own pace, overly structured schedules with little free time, curriculum being pushed down to lower grades, a pornographic epidemic of sexual imagery everywhere. Go to the grocery store, you'll see what I mean. Documented increases in drug use among teenagers and younger, documented increases in suicide rates, stress, anxiety, and medication to overcome those things, all under the age of 18, all of which, most of which, stem from broken boundaries and hurried development, which is what we as adults want, not what's necessarily good for kids. It's time we slow down. Drag Queen Storytime is not about development, play, creativity, or being physically active. DQST is not about what's good for kids, it's about an agenda. What a person does in their own home, in their own time, in the company of other consenting adults is their business. At a time when children are at their most impressionable, when their minds are capable of concrete distinctions, not nuances, we're putting a man dressed up not as a woman, as a caricature of a woman, based on stereotypes, often based on stereotypes, inherent sexuality, and often bad misogyny. This creates confusion, not acceptance. Consider last year's role model for our children. Outside of this activity, this is what Drag Queen is about. What this person does in their own home, I have no problem with. That's their privacy and just that, what they choose to do. This is not play. This is not what we think contributes to a wholesome or healthy development of a child. This is not an opt-out situation. It's time for us as adults to reclaim proper boundaries and healthy development and a path for kids. DQST is not that path. The safe, natural development of children is more important than the DQST agenda. Please cancel this event.
Our fourth speaker this evening is William Williams, MD, Drag Queen Story.
I'm William Williams, from Havertown, resident since 1986. As a physician, I know that all individuals must be treated with respect and compassion. I bear no ill will towards anyone associated with Drag Queen Storytime. But I also know that there are vulnerable populations that need and deserve special protection. Children are a vulnerable population. It is a fact of neurobiology and developmental psychology that young children have a high degree of neuroplasticity, and their exposure to social influences has long-lasting consequences. Among these is the possible development of gender dysphoria. Gender dysphoria is a psychological condition in which individuals experience a marked incongruence between their experienced gender and the gender associated with their biological sex. Gender dysphoria is not genetically determined. It comes about primarily through environmental influences. I am very concerned with the possibility of Drag Queen Storytime fostering gender dysphoria in the children who attend. While only 0.6% of Americans identify as transgender, the number of minors who are identifying as transgender are increasing. In fact, rapid onset gender dysphoria is a new trend among young people who have been exposed to gender confusion through friends and social media. Many individuals with gender dysphoria become socially isolated. Suicidal ideation, suicide attempts, and substance abuse are relatively common among those with gender dysphoria. Children with gender dysphoria may also suffer from anxiety and symptoms of depression, and this can persist into a and this can persist into adulthood. This is not because of societal prejudice, because this holds true in societies such as Sweden, where this gender fluidity has been accepted for many, many decades. So it's not societally conditioned. I'd also like to note that drag queens are typically associated with adult entertainment. Exposure of children to other forms of adult entertainment is associated with predisposing them to participating in early onset sexual activity and becoming victims of sexual abuse.
Fifteen seconds.
While the wide availability of the Internet and search engines searching for the term "drag queen" brings one to a number of sexually suggestive images and videos which are inappropriate for children, I urge all of you to do what you can to cancel and prevent children being exposed to this kind of activity. Our children must not be put at risk. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight on Drag Queen Storytime is Jean Lutz.
I live at 169 Clemson Road in Bryn Mawr. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak to you tonight. I'm, in addition to being a township resident, I'm an English professor at Villanova University, where I teach American literature and gender and women's studies. As an English professor, I'm a devoted fan of our public library system, which operates like our public schools, is a cornerstone of our democracy. As a scholar of gender studies, I have a deep appreciation for how much meaning people attach to sexual identity and gender expression. During my academic career, I have witnessed an explosion of scholarship that has revealed the damage caused by rigid assumptions about gender and sexuality. That's why I'm proud to live in a township that protects individuals from discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender experience. I thank our commissioners for your service in creating and supporting an inclusive climate, and I thank my fellow community members for doing the same thing. Gender variance is not something that children should learn to fear or hate. I'm also a parent, and I want my elementary-age children to have a public library system that's inclusive. I have two kids, an athletic boy, that people often call a boys' boy, and a girl who likes dresses. I do not think my children will be injured in any way by Drag Queen Storytime or any of the other gay pride events that are scheduled for this coming Saturday at our public library. Quite the opposite. Events like these, which advocate kindness and discourage bullying, are a sign of our library's commitment to promoting the common good. Youths who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or questioning should not be considered abnormal, nor should the adults they will grow to become. My view on this issue is supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics, a national professional organization with 67,000 members committed to optimizing the physical, mental, and social health and well-being of all infants, children, adolescents, and young adults. The LGBTQ community has long been inaccurately associated with pedophiles by people who wish to stigmatize them. But scientific research has found no correlation between sexual orientation and child abuse. For decades, experts have argued that debates on this topic distract lawmakers and public from dealing with the real, everyday problem of child abuse. Although we've made progress, our LGBTQ youth continue to suffer from a lack of protection and a lack of role models. And students who experience bullying because of their sexual orientation are three times more likely to miss school. They're also more likely to be verbally harassed at school. Given these facts, I'm almost done. Given these facts, we all stand to benefit from supporting programs like Drag Queen Storytime. Parents who object to programs like this one are free to avoid them, of course. Still, I'll close with a word of encouragement to those who recoil with fear and anxiety from drag queens. There's still time to choose a more accepting path. To paraphrase the writer and activist Rita Mae Brown, "The only queer people are those who don't love anybody." Thank you.
That concludes our registered speaker portion of the agenda. We now turn to the portion where anyone can talk on an agenda item. It must be an agenda item.
Is that?
No, that's not. You can speak under Agenda Item Number 18, which is a continuation of the Citizens Forum. It has to be on an agenda item. Anybody who wants to speak on an agenda item? Okay. So that concludes the Citizens Forum. We'll pick up this discussion and this conversation.
Excuse me. I wanted to say something about the library program itself. May I say that?
Well, you can do that. No, no, you can do that under Agenda Item Number 18.
It didn't have anything to do with Drag Queen.
No, but it has, it's not on the agenda. It has to be on the agenda for you to speak. Okay, but you will have the opportunity under Agenda Item Number 18. Okay? We'll get through the agenda pretty quickly, so.
That's a point worth making, is that the continuation at 18 isn't just limited to the Drag Queen Story Hour. Any citizen who wants to speak on any topic that isn't on our agenda either could sign up for the early speech for the six people that just spoke, or the five people that just spoke, or can speak toward the end of the meeting in the continuation. So any item is free at that point. You can discuss any item you'd like. That is where we're going to pick up the discussion of the Drag Queen Story Hour as well.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll now turn our attention to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting minutes of May 13, 2019. Commissioner D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of May 13, 2019.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Any questions or edits to the minutes? I have a voice vote, all in favor. Signified by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstention? Minutes are approved. Agenda Item Number Six is the approval of the warrants. Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve warrant number six of 2019 totaling $2,856,414.20, comprising the general sewer fund payroll from May 16 of 2019 in the amount of $661,891.17. The general sewer fund payroll from May 30 of 2019 in the amount of $656,343.75. General fund disbursements number six, 2019, in the amount of $715,127.82. Sewer fund disbursements number six of 2019 in the amount of $518,271.20. Community development block grant fund disbursement number six, 2019, in the amount of $81,668.60. Capital projects fund disbursement number six of 2019 in the amount of $212,868.91. And the credit card statement ending May 27, 2019 in the amount of $10,242.93.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel.
Mr. President, our township auditor has reviewed these warrants. Any questions that were raised by him were answered to his satisfaction by our finance staff. He recommends approval, as do I.
Are there any other questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The warrants are approved. Now turn to the part of the agenda with Agenda Item Number Seven. And for those of you who are attending their first Board of Commissioners meeting, we have two meetings of the Board of Commissioners each month. One, the first Monday of the month, is a work session where we debate, discuss, and question the various ordinances, resolutions, purchases, whatever it might be that we're going to vote on the following week, which is our regular meeting, which is tonight's meeting. So everything will go pretty quickly, items seven through 17, because we've already had debate and discussion, unless some new information comes to light, or a commissioner has a specific question that they'd like to ask. So we'll now turn to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is Ordinance Number P2, 2019, Haverford Reserve Bill of Sale, Second Reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P2, 2019, accepting the transfer of ownership of sewer lines and related improvements within certain portions of the common elements of Haverford Reserve, the carriage homes, and authorizing a sanitary sewer and utility and access easement agreement on a portion of the property located 3500 Darby Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Any discussions or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Agenda Item Number Eight, Ordinance Number P7, 2019, Peddling and Solicitation, Second Reading.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Siegel.
Motion to adopt the, it should be the second reading of Ordinance Number P7, 2019, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 1960 adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of the Township of Haverford by further amending and supplementing Chapter 130, Peddling and Solicitation, Section 130.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
No.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Agenda Item Number Nine, Ordinance Number P11, 2019, Traffic Electric Charging Stations, Amending Chapter 175, Section 32, Parking on Public Property, First Reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of Ordinance Number P11, 2019, amending Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic Parking on Public Property by establishing protocol for electric charging stations.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner D'Amelio. Any discussion or questions?
I wonder if you would consider an amendment. Right now, we're restricting people from parking or charging the cars from 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Do you see any reason that we couldn't allow charging during that period? We want to encourage people to use it as much as possible.
I would be willing to take that amendment.
I just have a question. Why did we restrict it?
The reason we restricted it was that that's the general ordinance for the parking lot. Most cars in general are not allowed to park. We have two spaces.
So you're just talking about the two spaces dedicated for public use.
I'm not talking about that.
Yeah, I'll go along with that.
Is any input from staff or any concerns? From the police's perspective?
Normally, we wouldn't, this is in a public parking lot, and normally, we don't allow overnight parking in the public parking lot.
Although, if someone's at the stadium at 11 o'clock at night, we also usually don't enforce that. But that's what the, how the ordinance reads. In this case, we're just...
But we say that there's no problem charging between those hours, but we maintain the no, you know, overnight parking. I mean, there must be a way we can note that. Charging is fine between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00.
That's what I thought.
Any problem with tabling this for work session?
There is a limit in the ordinance limiting the first reading.
You can only charge for three hours, so, but we're allowing cars to be there, to be charged.
Well, it just conflicts, Commissioner Holmes, it conflicts with our policy of no overnight parking in any park or public facility, as far as I know.
If there's a three-hour limit on charging, it would not seem to be considered overnight. Well... You can only charge for three hours maximum.
Right, and a car's going to be hooked up to the charger. So I would suggest that any car parked overnight in one of our parking lots in the electric charging spot that isn't charging is violating our ordinance. If it's charging, charging.
I agree.
And we ought to be able to do a quick fix of that right now and pass this ordinance, especially because we need a second reading anyway. So as long as we say it clearly and pass, and everybody knows its intent, we can fix the wording between the first and second reading.
May I suggest some language?
Yes.
That would potentially resolve it, that you can indicate in Part A, "It shall be unlawful for any authorized person to park any motor vehicle on any public property of the township other," the entire paragraph, comma, "other than vehicles parked for purposes of electric charging," and then, "No vehicle parked for purposes of electric charging may park for more than," I would say, "four hours to allow time if someone goes home or something." And that way, we can maintain the parking restrictions, but we also allow the parking, but not overnight, because I think what we don't want to do is have someone park all that there, leave it at 10:00 at night, and say, "Well, I'll come back in the morning when someone else may want to use it." So that would be my suggestion.
Commissioner Oliva, Commissioner D'Amelio, are you okay with that suggestion?
Okay with it? I'm fine.
All right with that?
So formally, you accept that amendment?
Yes, we formally accept that amendment.
I formally accept that amendment, Mr. Holmes.
So this will be a first reading as amended by the suggested changes by Commissioner Siegel. Any other additional comments or questions, discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Now turning to Item Number 10, Ordinance Number P12, 2019, Amending Chapter 83, Firearms, Fireworks, and Other Weapons, First Reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the first reading of Ordinance Number P12, 2019, amending and supplementing the general laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 83, Firearms, Fireworks, and Other Weapons, Section 83.1, Discharge Prohibited and Exceptions by modifying the provision to require reporting of lost or stolen firearms.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Oliva.
This is basically saying that if you lose your weapon, you're required to report it. Is that what we're saying here?
Yes.
Twenty-four hours.
The Township Police or the state police.
Okay.
Were there similar ordinance, didn't Philadelphia pass a similar ordinance that was overturned?
No. Pittsburgh passed it, and it was upheld because it wasn't seen to be in preemption of state law. So this is actually probably the only firearm legislation that a local municipality could pass. Yeah, and it's been passed by some forty-some municipalities, cities, et cetera.
Any other questions, debate, discussion?
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
We're addressing a small area because state law preempts the regulation of firearms by municipalities, and, you know, we are living in a time when this is unfortunately a drop in the bucket. We need to be aware that as many people have died this year up to March 6, which was D-Day, as died on D-Day, that we are dealing with a pervasive problem that stems from significant issues that go beyond what this board can address. It's kind of ironic, because I was thinking about it, and I was actually bar mitzvahed 47 years ago today, and at that time, I could go to a synagogue and not have to be greeted first by an armed guard or people who are retired special services, as we do where we go. That is common. Religious schools and our schools continue to deal with a problem that years ago with Saturday night specials, and now is far worse. And I applaud this board for the efforts it's taking here, and then the resolution that I've proposed that follows. But we really need to make our legislators aware of how serious this problem is and how deep it goes in our society.
Mr. President. Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
President, I applaud Mr. Siegel for drafting this legislation, and I think it's important that we not downplay the significance of this particular... important that we not downplay the significance of this particular law, making our local police, or the state police, aware that if your car got broken into last night, and your loose change was taken, and some old eight-tracks you had in it were taken, and a Glock was taken, that the police are going to deal with that a lot more seriously than they're going to if you leave out that your firearm was taken from your car, your firearm was taken from your house. I truly believe that we will stop crimes from happening by compelling people in Haverford Township to take the civic duty of reporting the loss or the theft of any firearm that they own. And I defy anyone to explain to me how that could infringe on anybody's rights, no matter how you feel about the Second Amendment, anybody's rights to own and bear arms. You certainly have the duty, as a member of our society, to inform the township, the local police, or the state police, when a weapon that you have has now fallen into the wrong hands. So, bravo, Commissioner Siegel, and my fellow commissioners, and obviously, I'm strongly in support of this.
Any other discussion or questions?
Just a question, prior to these type of ordinances, there was no federal regulations for somebody who loses their firearm to report it?
No.
There's no federal regulations on any.
No. And in fact...
Or state.
No.
Nothing.
Wow. In fact, it is...
No, I would if I had lost it.
It is extremely common that weapons that are lost or stolen are found and used in crime, in tragedies. I explained some of the involvement I had at our work session, and the requirement of lost or stolen weapons being reported is designed to require that they be reported when they are legitimate, and often, the incidence of lost or stolen weapons are not, and they are actually people who sell them, and on the streets, and they end up in violence that impacts all of us.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Resolution Number 2142-2019, Statewide Preemption of Firearms Laws. Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2142-2019, imposing statewide preemption of firearm laws, limiting the ability of municipalities seeking to reduce gun violence to enact appropriate legislation.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McCloskey. Would you like to present, since we didn't read this into the record at the work session? Commissioner Siegel, would you like to read this resolution into the record?
Yes. Thank you. Whereas protecting public safety in our community is one of our most serious and fundamental responsibilities, whereas every day, on average, ninety-seven, ninety-six Americans are killed by gun violence, including seven children, whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries, whereas in 2016, sixteen hundred American children were killed with guns, and at least six thousand shot and injured, this equates to an average of twenty-three children shot every day, whereas our schools should be safe environments, where students and teachers need not fear gun violence, whereas American women are at elevated risk of firearm violence, and are eleven times more likely to be shot and killed than women in other developed countries, whereas recent tragedies highlight the need to prevent mentally ill persons from purchasing, obtaining, or using firearms, whereas gun violence is a concern not only in our schools, but across our community, and every person deserves to live in a neighborhood free from the impacts of gun violence, whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens must not be made at the expense of keeping guns away from dangerous people, whereas in 2016, more than 237,000 guns nationwide were reported stolen to the National Crime Information Center. Approximately 1.4 million guns were stolen during household burglaries and other property crimes from 2005 through 2010, and more than 2 million guns were stolen from 2007 to 2016, whereas police consistently report that many guns used in crimes have not been reported lost or stolen, whereas Pennsylvania law currently prohibits any county, municipality, or township from regulating the lawful ownership, possession, transfer, or transportation of firearms, ammunition, or ammunition components when carried or transported for purposes not prohibited by the laws of this Commonwealth, whereas Pennsylvania's current firearm preemption laws prohibit local governments from adopting reasonable gun laws tailored to local condition, and prevents mayors, municipal councils, boards of commissioners, and law enforcement officers from enacting, maintaining, and enforcing reasonable firearm regulations as allowed under the Constitution of the United States, whereas firearm preemption laws proposed or enacted in recent years throughout the country, one, impose punitive penalties on local officials who seek to reduce gun violence, two, incentivize individuals and groups to sue such officials, three, require local taxpayers to bear the cost of such vexatious litigation, and four, create special standing that would allow anyone who lawfully owns a gun in Pennsylvania the right to sue, including special interest groups, whereas Pennsylvania law does not prohibit any county, municipality, or township from requiring the reporting of lost or stolen firearms, whereas mayors, municipal councils, boards of commissioners, and law enforcement officials are best positioned to adopt reasonable firearm regulations tailored to their local conditions, whereas laws imposing punitive penalties on or authorizing lawsuits against local officials who seek to reduce gun violence threaten public safety, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township registers its strong opposition to firearm preemption laws that, one, encourage lawsuits against local officials who seek to reduce violence, and, two, require local taxpayers to bear the cost of such vexatious litigation, including Senate Bill 531 and House Bill 1066, both of which are pending before the legislature in Harrisburg, and its support for legislation such as current Senate Bill 625, which would permit governments such as Haverford Township to regulate the possession, transfer, or transportation of firearms, ammunition, or ammunition components when carried or transported on any property owned, operated, or maintained by the political subdivision, in other words, the township. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township registers to its state and federal elected officials and to the President of the United States its strong support for laws that permit local officials seeking to reduce gun violence to enact appropriate legislation, including legislation such as Senate Bill 625, which is pending before the legislature in Harrisburg, and would permit mayors, municipal councils, boards of commissioners, and law enforcement officers to regulate the possession, transfer, or transportation of firearms, ammunition, or ammunition components when carried or transported on any property owned, operated, or maintained by the political subdivision, including but not limited to buildings, parks, and conveyances or vehicles.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Any questions or discussion on this proposed resolution?
Well, I agree with Dan on Ordinance Number Ten, but on Resolution Number Eleven, I also look at the people who are the senior citizens, who are disabled, who live by themselves. They need protection, because not everybody carrying a gun is a bad guy. There's a lot of good people out there. It's a shame they weren't in the churches and synagogues when those people got killed. So, I do believe in the fact of if a gun's stolen or lost, they should report it, but I don't agree on this, because what you're doing here is you're really taking away the rights of the people who are the innocent people, who deserve to have protection for themselves.
That's not true. All this resolution says is, "We oppose preemption and support local officials." It has nothing to do with, does not address, or in any way focus, mention, or have any relevance to do with a person's lawful right to self-protection, to purchase a weapon if they are within the categories of persons permitted to do so for either self-protection, for hunting, or for any other lawful purpose. So, respectfully, I don't believe that your interpretation of the resolution is accurate.
We just see it two different ways, Dan.
Any other discussion or questions?
Put it.
Okay. You have a comment?
Just that I don't think reasonable minds can disagree on what this resolution does. The resolution simply pushes back at the state, which makes a real punitive effort at preventing local people from doing something in their towns about gun violence and about, and regulating gun ownership. So, I do agree with Commissioner Siegel, and I don't think this is fairly characterized as something that reasonable people can disagree on. I think it's what the state has done, and appended to this resolution for all of us to review, but unfortunately, it's not part of the agenda, is the actual preemption law under consideration in Pennsylvania right now, and it would shock the conscience of everybody in this audience if they saw what the, what they're trying to do at the state level to prevent, to punish, local governments from doing anything involving gun violence. I mean, to actually allow lawsuits against local government officials, and then impose the, impose the attorney's fees on the government that's trying to enforce these laws. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the kind of stuff that Dan is trying to combat with this resolution. It has nothing to do with the lawful ownership and responsible ownership of firearms under the Second Amendment.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Ordinance Number P13-2019, Traffic First Reading. Commissioner Oliva.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number P13-2019, Authorizing Traffic Restrictions on the Following Highways, Special Purpose Zone in Front of 546 Wells Road.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McCloskey. Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Resolution Number 2139-2019, Authorization to Execute Documents. Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2139-2019, Authorizing David R. Berman, Township Manager/Secretary of the Board, to execute any and all documents relating to the administration of any federal and state funding programs, including the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs effective Monday, June 10, 2019.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner D'Amelio. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Resolution Number 2140-2019, Fee Schedule Amendment.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2140-2019, Authorizing a Comprehensive Fee Schedule for the Convenience and Ease of the General Public in Determining Township Fees for the Cost of Said Services.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McCloskey.
Mr. President, the title of this fee schedule amendment is a little bit misleading in that the overwhelming majority, I mean ninety-seven percent, of the fees that are listed in this, in this schedule are not changing, and are not new. Each year, we adopt and reauthorize the comprehensive, comprehensive fee schedule for the township. In the work session, I noted the few amendments that are in this. The most significant is that we have finally formalized the parking fees with regard to 25 cents per 30 minutes at our kiosks, convenience fees, parking lot hang tags, parking carts for senior citizens and all, and things that had been otherwise not delineated, these fees, but were just separately noted, and then, one or two other corrections in this list. But it is just a recapitulation of the fees, the fee schedules we've used for every year.
Any other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Approval of Draft CDBG Action Plan for Funding for 2019.
Motion to approve the draft CDBG action plan for funding for 2019.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner McGarrity, seconded by Dr. Hart. Any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Contract Awards. We have two this evening, the first of which is Public Works Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract.
Motion to award the Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract to Signal Services, Westchester, PA, in the amount of $35,155, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner McGarrity, seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Second contract award this evening, the Grange Estate Lower Spring House Roof Project at the Grange to be funded by CDBG funds, actually from our, I think, our 2018 allocation.
Mr. President, motion to award the Lower Spring House Roof Project to Donald E. Ressinger Incorporated, Westchester, PA, in the amount of $128,770, submitting the only responsible bid.
Second.
Dr. Hart, seconded by Commissioner McGarrity. Any questions or discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Is a Purchase at the Scadium.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of a vapor barrier reflective ceiling from Energy Innovation, Inc., Saint Laurent, Quebec, Canada, in the amount of
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hart. Any questions, discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey. Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay.
We're boring, but you don't have to put the lights out.
I just thought they were establishing mood lighting for '18.
Now we turn to a continuation of the Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. Actually, anything anybody would like to speak on? So we have, just to refresh you, do you understand the process of the ground rules? It's a three-minute, you're allocated three minutes to speak, and Dave Berman will give you a cue at 15 seconds remaining. I would ask that if anyone wants to speak on an item unrelated to the Drag Queen Storytime, anyone in the audience like to speak on something unrelated to the Drag Queen Storytime?
Andy, can we tell the ladies in the back, there's five empty chairs up here for any of the ladies who want them? Five.
Okay, so we'll now turn our attention to the Drag Queen Storytime. You have three minutes to speak.
I'm real quick, can you see? I want to talk about the Brookline School.
Okay, please come on. You state your name and your address?
Thank you for reminding me what I need to do, because I don't like speaking in front of people. My name is Alyssa O'Johnny Roscoe. I live on Edgewood Road. I came to the meeting last week where a lot of people were speaking about the Brookline School. My heart is beating really fast, I'm sorry. I was a teacher for 14 years, and my daughter goes to the Brookline School currently. And what I find very important about the Brookline School is that the building itself is a presence in the community. So my hope is that it would stay standing and renovated. So my husband just traveled to Arizona State University, where I went to college, and he called me and he said, "This is just so emotional." I don't know how long he's been out of college, it's been maybe 20 years. And just the physical presence of a building and a community for the people that went there is emotional, and I think that's a very strong consideration for you to take as you decide whether to demolish it or renovate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So anyone that wants to speak on the Drag Queen Storytime will have three minutes to do so. You can only speak once, and at the conclusion, we'll look at all the questions that have been raised, and between Phil Goldsmith, who's president of the library, our solicitor, and members of this board, we'll try to address any and all questions that have been raised. And again, I would remind you to keep this civil and respectful. We can agree to disagree, and we can do it civilly and respectfully, so please, please. You have to state your name and your address, please.
Debbie Moran, 1107 Garfield. And yes, I am against the Drag Queen coming, but the bigger issue is, I found out there's no background check for anybody there. Now I find that is just, I cannot believe that we have people coming into our library that is not background checked. My husband was a CCD teacher, he had to do it. Anybody who comes in to volunteer at our library should have a background check. If not, something's going to happen. Are you guys going to be, and we're going to be sued for it? That's just terrible. That's all I have to say. Anybody who comes to our library should be background checked. Otherwise, don't come.
Hello, I'm Hannah Tarish, you guys know me. This is the first time I'm speaking without a script, and even though this is what I do as a teacher for 25 years, I'm a little bit nervous, but I'm going to give it a shot.
Your address, please.
Oh, 412 Mill Road, Haver Town. And speaking of being a teacher, I teach at the Haverford School for Boys. I just finished my seventh year on Friday. And a little bit of history, when I was a high school senior somewhere else, no woman could work at Haverford above the fifth grade as a teacher. No woman could wear pants, and no woman could be unescorted on campus after 4:30 PM. I'm now the department chair of the History Department at the Haverford School, and I can wear pants. I teach 11th grade. That is progress, and that is change, and I know I'm a middle-aged woman, but it hasn't been that long since I was a high school senior, and that was true at Haverford. The point I'm trying to make is that our society and our country has made a lot of progress when it thinks about equity and inclusion and who is worthy of respect and dignity. And I am going to be proud to bring my seven-year-old son to the event on Saturday, the Drag Queen Storytime Event. And if anyone feels like I'm making a bad choice, they can make a different choice for their own family and for their own peers. And so I also, as a history teacher, have been teaching the Constitution for 25 years, and even though I don't have a law degree like some of you up here, I do know our Constitution very well, and I know our First Amendment very well. And I know that we all have the right to assemble with the people that we choose to assemble with, and I know that we have the right to speak freely, and I know we also have the right to be a person in the world without a dictated religion controlling our lives. And that is integral to who I am as a person and as a teacher, and I am thrilled to be in a township that also has those values that will be present on Saturday. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Delasi. I work at 2100 Darby Road, Haver Town. I have for the last 30 years in Haver Town.
Where do you reside?
I reside in Upper Darby. I've, as I said, I've worked in Haver Town for 30 years, and when I first heard about the Drag Queen storytelling, I was very disappointed. I thought that everyone would consider this event something undesirable for children so young. The two, Drag Queen, which to me is a very adult term and concept, and storytelling, which is for the very young, just do not go together. What became my mission to share the news suddenly spun out of control and became a much larger difference of opinion. All I kept hearing was, "Love is love, and it's wrong to hate," and so on. This event is not about love or hate of someone or a group of people. It is about what is appropriate for young children who are at the very beginning of their wonderful but soon-to-be-grown-up lives. Children are exposed to the nuances of life soon enough. Gender confusion is something that will be introduced to them eventually, whether through friends, family, or perhaps their own gender issues. I would ask the question of the group, why can't the story you are telling be the entertainment for young children? Why is it that we need to resort to a man dressed as a woman, albeit a highly exaggerated woman, to tell a story? I don't feel that anyone in this room can say with 100% certainty that allowing a Drag Queen to read a story to an impressionable child will not have an impact on their life in some way. The impact being confusion about who they are at such a tender age. We see that our world is also spiraling out of control due to so much going on with our youth. Drug use, suicides, and so on. Why add this layer of complication to the mix? I'm not telling or trying to tell anyone who is an adult how to live their lives. I'm just appealing to this body to strongly encourage the Haverford Library to reconsider the invitation of a man who dresses as a woman in a rather flamboyant fashion, who is placed in charge of reading a story to a child as young as three years old.
15 seconds.
Sadly, what was unthinkable just a few short years ago is being acceptable in the name of tolerance. Why is that? Is it too much trouble to take a stand? Do we fear not being popular because we speak out against something we intrinsically think is wrong? We just may never know, and I hope and urge everyone to just err on the traditional side and not allow this storytelling to happen with a Drag Queen. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Diamond. My husband and I live at 204 Buck Lane in Ward 5. We've been residents of the township since 1999. I'm here tonight in support of the Haverford Township Free Library, and in particular, in its scheduling of Pride Day activities. The Haverford Township Library is the most visited library in Delaware County system, with an average of 179,000 visitors a year. This is no accident. Just looking at the library's list of offerings and programs across the lifelong learning spectrum, one has to be impressed. There are chess and cookbook clubs, opportunities to understand and enjoy music, film, and theater, interactions for homeschooled children, metabolic training, and many, many others. Pride Day activity is but one of the many extraordinary occasions provided by the library to share information and resources, excuse me, and resources to nourish the imagination and connect individuals to people and events outside the boundaries of their own experience. As someone else has noted, if Pride Day activities don't interest you, then don't attend. There are so many other ways to take advantage of and benefit from the library's extraordinary services and collections. Nevertheless, Pride Day and the Drag Queen Story Hour are extensions of the library's obligation as a public institution to provide equal access to discussion, debate, and dissemination of information and ideas without censorship or discrimination. We must recognize and accept that traditional roles of public libraries have changed, and with them, our assumptions about what, how, where, and with whom we learn and communicate. Freedom to read, to have access to information, and to speak in public spaces are critical to maintaining a healthy democracy. I wish to express my gratitude to the commissioners for supporting the library, and also to the library for upholding the ideas of respect, inclusivity, and equality, and for creating a welcoming environment for diverse backgrounds. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Patty O'Donnell, and I live at 541 Furlong Avenue. I've been a resident of Haver Town for 19 years. First, I want to say I support the Haverford Township Library, and I applaud them for hosting this Drag Story Hour. I read that they had it last year, and it was very successful. And, you know, I didn't even know that happened last year, so. Anyway, I was thinking, it is one hour, this is a one-hour storytime, out of 8,760 hours in the year. This is just one hour devoted to diversity for any child in our township who chooses to attend. You know, it's a choice that's made for anybody that wants to be there. It's not forced, it's not in this school. It's a choice that the library is offering, okay? Now, the woman that spoke earlier, the Chair of the Human Resource Committee?
Relations Committee.
Relations Committee? Okay. I found it interesting that she spoke about the diversity, because that's really what we're talking about. And she basically was saying that this township supports it, you know, and to be quite honest, I don't see a whole lot in that area much, and I'm thrilled to see something like this happening. Okay, now, mind you, maybe it's a little, some people would call it flamboyant, maybe people don't know much about Drag Queens. I personally don't know much about them. When I was younger and I didn't know much, I was kind of afraid of them myself. But the fact of the matter is, they're a person just like everybody else, and if you just take some time to get to know them, you may not fear them as much. And they're really, I really support the library. I don't think the library would bring anybody into this township that's out there to harm anybody. So with that said, let's see. If the Story Hour on Saturday is canceled, then this Ms. Belina Canto, who is the performer, the entertainer, the artist, also known as Matthew Mazano, is really being discriminated against, okay? You know, he, she has rights. Under Article 19 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, you know, it's being violated. If we cancel that, it's being violated for him, okay?
15 seconds.
Everybody has a right to freedom of expression, and if we cancel that, we're taking that right away from him. So in closing, for those who are afraid of Saturday Story Hour, I, you know, I understand. I accept that. But I know I'm looking forward to going there, to attending the event, and maybe learning something myself about someone who looks very different than me but really is not much different at all. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tuff. I live at 131 East Hathaway Lane. I just completed my coursework for my master's degree in clinical mental health counseling, and right now, I started my practicum at Child Guidance Resource Center. So I'm also a member of the American Counseling Association, the Association for Humanism in Counseling, and the Association for Creativity in Counseling. I'm here to say that Drag Queen Story Hour will not make your kids gay or trans, but it might reduce their risk of suicide if they are. Kids need a role model, they need someone, especially in a community where they might be getting pushback like this, or getting told that there's nobody there to support them. I want to read a statistic about suicide in the transgender community. Research shows unequivocally that LGBT youth have exorbitant rates of suicide attempts, which are exacerbated by homophobic attitudes, including political attacks on the civil rights of LGBT communities. Recent reports indicate that the establishment of rights activities are associated with significant reduction in the rate of attempted suicide among LGBT youth, potentially resulting in approximately 134,000 fewer children attempting suicide each year in the United States. But despite these findings, we still see backwards policies, backwards thoughts on events like this. I want to remind our commissioners that you have been chosen to represent all the people in this district, not just the straight ones, not just the cisgender ones. And I would also argue that canceling this event makes our township look ill-informed, undereducated, and backward to the rest of the township. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is George Christopher Adams. I live at 28 Ralston Avenue, Haver Town, Pennsylvania. Lived here for, going on almost 21 years, raised three awesome children in this township for just this reason, Haverford Township Free Library. Do not be afraid of what you don't understand. I fully support Drag Queen Storytime.
Charles DeFayo, Westchester, PA, but I grew up in Delaware County. I lived 224 Walnut Hill Lane, Haver Town, for eight years. We could cite a lot of stats from the medical websites, and the young lady there just did, Dr. Williams did earlier, but if, and I'm not going to go into this detail, but acpeds.org is the American College of Pediatrics for children. Okay, now. Rates of suicide are nearly 20 times greater among adults who use cross-sex hormones and undergo sex reassignment surgery, even in Sweden, which is among the most LBGTQ-affirming countries. We are not born with a gender. Everyone is born with biological sex. Gender and awareness and sense of oneself as male or female is a sociological and psychological concept, not an objective biological one. And I'm really here because I love, and I want to address what they talk about, inclusion and discrimination, but I want to tell you this. If a man can become a woman, then there are no rights for women. In addition to Drag Queen Story Hour, it's corruption of minors, child abuse, and I know parents have a choice to bring their children here, and the young lady said, or someone else said, "The library is free library." This is not the place, this is not, when you go to the Haverford Library Township Kids' Events page, it just looks out of place. It says, there's something about Legos, there's something about paws, there's a few other things for kids, and then it says Drag Queen Story Hour. I mean, come on, let's be real here. So if a man can become a woman, then there are no rights for women. In addition to Drag Queen Story Hour, it's corruption of minors and child abuse, so Drag Queen Story Hour is anti-woman, anti-child, anti-family, anti-marriage, and anti-life, which means it is also anti-man and anti-humanity. I'm asking you to please cancel it. But in addressing, you really, I don't like the way you paint us non-inclusion and discrimination because, and let me make a corollary here. Would you protect Down Syndrome children? I think they should be protected. In 20 years, there's going to be no Special Olympics. There'll be no Special Olympics in 20 years. Almost 100% of Down Syndrome children are aborted before they're born. They're American citizens, too, okay? So if you include every American, you need to include them as well, okay? And you also, your elected positions, really bear that in mind. Thank you.
My name is Marie McLaughlin. I live on 32 Decatur Road in Haver Town. And last year, when the Drag Queen Story Hour was at the library, my husband was there with my son to look at books, and he called me and said, "There's this, you know, big man dressed as a woman with the big, you know, big golden wig and fishnet stockings and things like this," and he just said, "This just looks so out of place here." This is just, to him, just really didn't seem appropriate. So I went down to check it out for myself to see what it was like, and I sat there, and she was there, and, you know, it was a peaceful climate. I felt that all the parents there, to me, the majority seemed to be same-sex parents who were happy that... who were happy that they were able to have this time. I don't agree with it for the reasons that were stated at the beginning of this meeting. I would rather that it wasn't fair. I agree that that photo that was held up of that drag queen, that really does get to the heart of the matter. For me, I don't think it's appropriate. I think, though, that one thing that bothered me, maybe it was the thing that bothered me the most from my experience of visiting there, was that the event was held in the main room where all the children's books are. So if you don't agree with the drag queen, I understand that we could simply not go to the library that day, but I resent that, because my tax money goes towards that library. And if I want to go to the library that Saturday, I want to be able to go there with my child and feel comfortable looking at the books. So I guess the thing that bothered me the most was that another meeting room wasn't used. There is one in the basement that's rather large. I used it for a unit on ancient Greece that I did in teaching some children, and it's very well-equipped. There's audiovisual hookups and other things. I'm just saying, I don't understand why I had to fill out an application explaining in detail what I was going to do at the library, and it had to be reviewed by the librarians, and it was about ancient Greece. And here, you know, this very highly questionable for a lot of people, I understand it's not questionable for others, but for others, it's a very, very sensitive, very crucial issue to have their child exposed, even for a little while visually, to somebody like that who's dressed that way in a very confusing way for some people. And so I guess I'm just wondering, you know, is there another way to look at this? My first choice would be that the Drag Queen Story Hour would be canceled, and my second choice, if that is impossible, is that it's not held in the main place for all of the children and parents, including those who don't agree with this. Couldn't they be using one of the other meeting rooms that's available, like I did?
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joan Mazur. I've lived here in Haverford Township for thirty, thirty-six years. I live at 1410B Road. I've raised three children, and they've gone through the Haverford School Systems, Schools, and they've all come out wonderfully. I have ten grandchildren. I was really surprised to hear about the Drag Queen Storytime in our library, really surprised. I never thought anything like this would happen. I really protest it, and while I certainly support loving all people, I also think it is very important to properly form our children to accept their biological sex. Gender dysphoria is a serious condition which requires compassion, love, and psychological treatment. It tends, it sends the wrong message to have adults in drag leading a story hour for our children. This leads to confusion about their identity and will lead to psychological problems and educational problems. There will be more bullying on the playgrounds after they're all sensitized to this, and this is how they're being sensitized. Our children should not be subjected to controversial ideologies during storytime at our community library. If parents cannot trust the library to present wholesome, family-oriented books and fare for our children, then the library won't be supported by these people. Have you reviewed the storybook, which is to be read to the children? Has the, has the head librarian reviewed this storybook? Is the presenter clear to be working with children by any government group? Has, has the librarian ever looked at keepkidsafe.paa.gov to see what's required for this? No. I sent an email to the librarian, and he hasn't answered me. The first thing I got back was that he was on vacation. He still hasn't answered me, and it's been three weeks. I don't understand it. I strongly urge you to cancel this program. Thank you very much.
I'm Beth White. I live at 501 Upland Road. I have five children. We've lived here for six years. Thank you. I don't know exactly what I'm going to say, but I just wanted to say that I love our library. I was there today with a crying baby and all, and were there all the time. I love Haverford Town. I grew up in Wayne. My mom always wanted to live here, all of her sisters and brothers, she grew up in Upper Darby, and I just love this community. I think that we can come together on so many things, really from the soccer fields to... I grew up in Wayne, a little more pretentious, but I just love how people can come together and have different views, and there we are, we run into each other at the pizza place or wherever we are. I, all I want to say about this is that I have five children, and I think that children have rights. I think they have rights. I think oftentimes, we're so concerned about our rights and our agenda, putting that on them, but they have rights, and I think we, as adults, have a duty to protect them and to allow them to absorb what is good for them. Are we thinking of their best interest? How about nature? How about art, music, all of the beautiful things? How about diversity? How about caring about the poor? How about service projects? How about taking care of our community? I know we live in an incredibly polarized community, and when I was listening about the guns, and I think it's so difficult that we are just sometimes put in one camp because we have one thought about one issue. But with this, I just think it's very important that we consider the children, their innocence, their rights, and their rights to be children. Thank you.
My name is Ron Vitale. My wife and I live at 208 Wickford Road. We have lived in this community for thirteen years. When I came and entered into this room, I heard Jen Lee from the HRC talk about inclusivity and diversity, and walking the walk and actually taking part of that is very difficult. I am in full support of Drag Queen Story Hour, and I'm asking all of us here to think for a moment. Think about empathy. Think about what it really takes to be inclusive. Look around our neighbors and everyone that's here. We're white, we're privileged, we look a certain way, we act a certain way. If we think about the person who's going to come and speak to our children as part of the storytime, and if we could for a moment get out of our sides and get into that person's shoes, the fear that person must be thinking about, that if they show up on Saturday, our community is ready to tear that person apart, is that being inclusive and open-minded and having any type of empathy for this person who is taking time to volunteer to read books to our children? I understand that there are many opposing points of view to this, but I believe that my wife and I, having children in this township and going through the school system, there are times that we need to stand up and we need to be an ally. I am a white cis-gen male, and I am standing up for those who are not being represented here. We're talking about someone who's not represented here, and I don't think that that's fair, and I think it's important that we do have empathy for these individuals that are willing to take their time and to be able to support and come and volunteer. There was a big article in the Washington Post this past week about the same topic. This same topic is being debated across the country, and I think we have to make a decision as part of our community here. It is my understanding that the power of the commissioners here, you cannot stop this from happening, it's a library decision, from the Board of Trustees. I would hope, if I'm understanding that correctly, that should be communicated to those of us here. I think it's really important that, again, we have empathy, we think about what this really means. I understand if you're opposed to it, don't go, but if you are in support of it, I'm asking all of us to go and support this person, because they're not being represented here, and I think it's important that we take a stand, and allies need to be with those people. Thank you.
My wife and I have lived at 217 Rodmore Road for fifty years. I did not come prepared to speak, but so much has touched my heart that I, I'm compelled to speak. My wife and I have devoted many years to young children, either through scouting or in coaching. My wife was a director of a preschool for thirty-four years. We know how impressionable young children are. The last gentleman just spoke about empathy for someone who is not represented. That's not what this is about. There is no question that consenting adults can do or be whatever they choose to be. We're talking about young children. Young children ages, let's say, three to five don't understand, quote-unquote, "diversity" and empathy, but they are impressionable, and they will get the wrong message. To me, there is no purpose in having storytime told to young, impressionable children by someone in drag. It serves no purpose other than to push an agenda. Again, if they want to push an agenda on adults, that's their prerogative. We have many laws and customs which protect children from everything, from they must be in a car seat, we talk about underage drinking, all the other things that we do to protect children. R movies, even PG under the age of thirteen. Let's consider what we're talking about here: Young, impressionable children at a library being entertained, quote-unquote, by a drag queen. I strongly object to this, and I would love to see it canceled. Thank you very much.
My name is Christine Bradley Smith. I didn't come here prepared with anything. I will show you this picture, though. This is one of the drag queens that is around, and I think it's kind of scary, but I think we all have to think that, honestly, this is not something new. This is an agenda, and now they get here, they get their foot in the door. If anybody's familiar with Common Core, and I know some of you are, I know your names, that that's embedded into that Common Core is to start teaching the kids sex ed at age five. So this is just the start of it. They get their foot in the door. I have nothing against these people. I had friends that were, back in the sixties in New York, you know? I had friends that were trans, transgender, transvestite, they were a riot. I don't think they'd want to be, what's the word? I don't think they'd want to be the problem in this whole thing. I think there's plenty of people that could read stories to kids. I know grandmothers are boring, because I know, I have a kid at each one of these schools, two and one, and I hate to see this just start in this township, because it's not wrong, these people aren't wrong if they're invited, but behind them is the agenda of pushing this whole, "Let's sexualize our kids and tell them what..." Everything about it, and I mean everything, by the time they're five. If you have any doubt, look it up. It's there. It's there under Common Core, and it's been discussed, and it's as old as the hills. I just think we need to nip this in the bud. This is them getting their foot in the door, not the transgender, whoever's behind them. I don't know who that is, but we'll find out. And we don't relate this to pedophilia, nothing. There's nothing like that going on in everybody that I've talked to. It's just that they don't have a place here. They do have a place. They have great clubs, great clubs, and people choose to go through, they're having fun, but they don't really have to be, you don't have to be in front of our children, and we don't have to go along with everybody else. We just don't have to. So I thank you for listening to me. Have a good night.
Hi, my name's Karen Vitale, and I live on Wickford Road with my husband, who I can't let show me up. I wasn't planning on speaking either. There's a lot of people here who have a lot of really great things to say, even the ones that I don't agree with. And I think, for me, that's the core of this, is I'm not here to change anyone's mind. I'm here to ask that we understand that our township is made up of different people. Not all that different. As we saw, there's a lot of homogeneity in our township. We look alike, we tend to be in the same socio-economic demographic, but we're going to have different opinions. And my only point here is, this is about empathy. In a very, might seem unrelated way, I grew up with a brother who was special needs, very extreme special needs, and from the time that I was around this age, three to five years old, my mother used to bring him to my school to introduce him to people who might not have exposure to special needs kids, because they can be scary, they can be different. They can be the people that you might have to deal with at some point in your life. And my mother did that because there wasn't an opportunity for my brother to get out there, because if we want to put them in a special room where nobody can see them, that's what he dealt with. I look at kids in our school today who are special needs, and I see how they are part of the community, and my brother never had that. There are people in our community that you might not be able to see that are struggling because they don't have role models. And I'd also like to say, I was not in town last year to see the Drag Queen Story Hour. So I looked it up, and I looked and saw what Belina Canto does when she reads. One, I was struck by the fact that she dressed like my grandmother. There's nothing burlesque, there's nothing inappropriate. She dresses like she's going to go to brunch. And the other part is, there's nobody there doing anything to convert. We're talking about making people comfortable. So I just wanted to share that. And then one other thing, just because I've heard a lot of communication tonight about the American Academy of Pediatricians...
Fifteen seconds.
And I just want to state, in case anyone is confused, the American Academy of Pediatricians, I'm sorry, the American College of Pediatricians, which is the one that has all those lovely sentiments about suicide and transgender children, is an anti-LGBT hate group that has only two hundred members. They're not the accredited American Academy of Pediatricians, which has sixty-seven thousand members. So if you're going to quote people, then I think we need to just understand where they're coming from. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
My name is Suzanne Longo. I live at 2431 Hurst Terrace, and I'm a little ashamed tonight of what I'm hearing. I just went to the Jefferson Memorial, and I saw a quote, and I took a picture of it. I can't believe it's not more prevalent right now than, it was the first time I'd ever seen it. My nephew just texted me, so I have to wait until this goes away. I'm going to read it. "I'm not an advocate for frequent changes in laws and constitutions, but laws and institutions must go hand in hand with the progress of the human mind. As that becomes more developed, more enlightened, as new discoveries are made, new truths discovered, and manners and opinions change with the change of circumstances, institutions must advance, also to keep pace with the times. We might as well require a man to wear still the coat which fitted him when he was a boy as civilized society to remain ever under the regime of their barbarous ancestors." Basically, change happens, and we should start to go with it. This whole community probably goes to the Mumbers Parade. What do you think that they look like? It's, 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 there's nothing scary about what's going to happen at the library. I'm petrified of clowns. If you tell me there was a clown going to the library, I wouldn't go. I wouldn't take my kids. I wouldn't expose them to that, because I'm afraid of a clown. But just a person coming to the library to read a story to my child? Come on, guys, we're better than that. Thank you.
My name is Christine Rizzo, and I don't live in this township, but I've worked and I've played here, and my children have been at the stadium. So I didn't come prepared, but I feel as though I just wanted to add two cents, maybe from a different perspective. I do remember many years ago, about twelve years ago, I went to, a friend had invited me to a drag show. I was in Key West, Florida, there was beverages involved, whatever. And it was entertaining, and I understood that in its context at the time. When I heard about the story hour as an educator, as a mom... When I heard about the Story Hour as an educator, as a mom, I'm at both the college level and the secondary level, it was just confusing to me. And when I look at your website, when I came in tonight, it was just confusing that we didn't have the Drag Queen Story Hour or another Pride event for adults. Like, why do we just have it for children? If this is about Pride Day, I just think that we could make a more appropriate choice to celebrate the differences in people. As a woman, and in the midst of the Me Too movement, anyone that makes a mockery of my femininity, of my motherhood, not in entertainment, but in front of children, I just take a personal offense to that, and I think that women should be respected, just as every drag queen should be respected, right? Everyone deserves dignity and respect. I do believe that the entertainers have rights, but I just, at my very core being, believe that you have a more important duty to protect and make sure that the appropriateness of what happens at our library is in fact appropriate. So thank you for your time and allowing me to share my thoughts and views.
Anyone else want to speak on Drag Queen? Drag Queen?
You all might know me. Ross Anderson, 220 Heatherd Road, Haverford, PA, and I want to speak in support of the Drag Queen Happy Hour. Now, I'm going to bring my kids there, two boys, four and seven, and they're going to go there on Saturday, see the one with the big bushy hair, breasts, butt, whatever funny looks, they'll just laugh. To them, it's not like it's sexual, and you wouldn't know any, so it's not anything that they're being exposed to, it's just something funny and entertaining in there, simple like that. Now, I want to say too about diversity. My seven-year-old, like, he doesn't really know diversity, but he has a friend who is, one friend is Russian, one friend is Polish, one friend is black. To them, it's just another kid. It doesn't matter what skin color, or where they're from, or language, they speak. They are, their minds are more open, they're more, I mean, I don't know, to them, it's not like this definition, it's not this complication, it's just people are who they are. In regards to who puts on the drag show, I would agree that they, when in regards to the background tracks, like, whoever puts on the Drag Queen Show is fine as long as they are all, like, whoever, they're held to the same standards as whoever else would do a similar type of reading. I also want to say that this event, although I will always view drag as not necessarily transgender, but as a kind of fun celebration, it might lead to more acceptance of other people, and I do know that suicide is very high and prevalent amongst transgender individuals. However, it significantly goes down when people are, transgender individuals are accepted. A lot of the reason why they commit suicides is because they are kicked out by their family, they're kicked out by their friends, they're totally disowned, but when they are accepted by their friends and family, they are much more, their mental health is much more normal. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi. My name is Chris Barnes, and I live at 18 West Wilmot Avenue. Also unprepared to talk tonight, but called to speak just because I feel like in our society, people who are lesbian, bisexual, I can't remember what all the acronym stands for, but you guys know who I'm talking about, have been pushed, marginalized, bullied, asked to hide their identities because it makes us feel uncomfortable in some way. And I think that the time has come that we are more inclusive and respect differences and learn more, and I think that the library is offering an opportunity to open conversations with children about how people live different lives throughout our nation. And I support and embrace that our township would have this forum, not only just for the Drag Queen Story Hour, but I think there are a lot of different activities at the library that day in honor of Pride Month, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Last opportunity? Sure.
My name is Rosemary Miller. I live at 4410 Township Line Road, Drexel Hill. I think that children would like to see just people like themselves, normal people, because they can relate more to a person that is just like themselves, just a normal, not dressed up, or just, because they're so young. And that's what I think. I think that they would, just a regular person should be the one that tells the story, not anybody dressed up as an actor or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm afraid to speak for two reasons. The first one, my English is not so good. The second, I'm not from the town. I'm from Luzerne County. My name is Joseph Arras. I'm the American TFP, Tradition Family and Property, a lay Catholic organization that defends the principles that are based and foundational for our country. Yes, you're in very good discussions. It's the first time I come to Antown Hall. Yes, we start the discussion with hot delusion, the pleasure of delusion, one nation under God. What is one nation under God? Is obeying God's laws. We obeying God's laws do Drag Queen Story, because God created one man, one woman. Everyone knows that. The dogs know that. We don't know? God also told us, we're supposed to hate the sin and love the sinners. That's what we're supposed to do. It's not because, as he said, that his son loved diversity, I go this one best way to learn diversity and learn bad things. They learn, as impossible compare diversity of the color, of the language, but diversity of the gender, of the male and female. Drag Queen, they have an agenda, what someone else said here. The first, who promotes Drag Queen, what he said, we want, our goal is form one generation. They want to change one generation. I agree with the coach, he had said, their goal is much more the breed of entertainment for our children, change their ideology, what they have here, break their innocence. Yeah, I think so, we're not supposed to accept Drag Queen. And I repeat, not have not to do with love or not love, accept or don't accept. We're supposed to love the sinners but hate the sin. If you don't do this, why you have the pleasure of delusion here before you start your session? You believe in God or don't? Thank you.
I didn't plan on speaking tonight. My name is Janet Espin shade. I live at 520 Ramblewood Drive. I've been in this township since 1987. I'm really against a drag queen in the position of almost an educator or teacher speaking to children so young. This is an agenda, and I think that in an attempt for all of us to be so sympathetic to so many things, we've grown so much as a nation, sometimes we make mistakes. Sometimes the public feels it's okay to abort babies at full term, and you know, it's not. Movies are rated for a reason, you know, to protect our children. Teachers have codes of how they have to dress to be a teacher and educator. We have someone now coming into the library, talking to very young, young children. Is there a code? I was sort of relieved to hear that maybe she dresses like a grandmother, or he, but maybe they don't. So what would control what these very young children are being exposed to? So I don't think this is about gay rights. I really think this is about putting some limits on this and protecting our children, and maybe it's raising the age limit, you know, to a college level, when, you know, then they can make their own decisions. This is extreme behavior that we're exposing very young children to. So, thank you.
Hi. My name is Jack Holmes. I live at 2109 Chestnut Avenue. Hey, Dad. I had no intention of speaking tonight. I just wanted to say something, you know, as someone who has a lot of, you know, dear friends who, you know, are in the community, the LGBT community, who are transgender. I've heard a lot about the Drag Queen Agenda and the transgender, the trans, I'm a little anxious, I'm sorry, the transgender and the Drag Queen Agenda. Well, I'm going to let you guys in on a little secret about the Drag Queen Agenda. What's going to happen somewhere down the line, somewhere, you know, some child's going to see, you know, someone that doesn't conform to their idea of, you know, of a binary gender. And, you know, if they go, you know, and it's their choice, it's their parent's choice, if they go to some Drag Queen book reading, you know, they might ring Great Eggs and Ham, they're probably not going to read King Lear. What that child's going to think when they see that person, they might think, oh, it's a man, dresses as a woman. They're not going to see a monster, they're not going to see, you know, an outcast, they're not going to see someone who doesn't belong, they're going to see someone who read a book to them when they were a kid. And they're going to think, hey, that person's not that bad. That's really what the whole thing's about. It's not about trying to turn kids gay, it's just about trying to teach kids that something a little different isn't that bad. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Audra Lil. I live in David Drive in Haverford, and I want to say I am in full support of the library and their Pride Day festivities and Drag Queen Story Hour. I'm not afraid of it. I can parent my child through a confusing moment. Confusing moments happen to them all the time. My family is interfaith, interracial, we have members of it that are same-sex parents, and they play, interact, have birthday parties and celebrations and sadness with all of those family members, and when they have a question for me about something that's different, we just talk about it. That's parenting, that's what you do. So while I am, I obviously am in full support of any lifestyle choice, it's my job as a parent, no one's making me, making, I'm not like giving that choice over to somebody at the Pride Day festivities. And there is an agenda there, it's Pride Day, that's why that person is there. It's not a random Story Hour. It's part of a greater experience of opening your mind, opening your community to accept all of us, and I really appreciate the forum here tonight, and I hope that the library will continue to be supported as the wonderful institution that it is and the wonderful role model that it's being on this Pride Day that's coming up. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joe Grandi. I live at 68 Rob Moore Road. I think when we all look at our childhoods, we had good experiences and bad experiences. Even if you had great parents or the worst parents, you have good and bad experiences. And I think we could all look back on our lives and say, boy, that was a good one, that was a bad one, that took me the wrong way, that took me the right way. And I think it's up to us as the adults to make sure we give the children good experiences. There may be some parents here who are for it, and they'll counsel their children the proper way, but there's some children that don't have that proper counseling. Let's give them good experiences to build on in life, not bad experiences. They're going to get enough of the bad experiences, you know, at watching TV when no one is there to protect them. You're there to protect these children now. You need to do your job to make sure these children are not corrupted. Thank you for allowing me to make my point.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Patricia Lake Quinn. I live at 425 Brookline Boulevard. Not quite prepared to speak, but for me, this is not, I am against the program on Saturday for Drag Queen Story Hour. For me, this is not an issue of inclusiveness, tolerance, or discrimination against anyone. I have friends, family, coworkers, of all persuasions, all types. For me, the problem I have with this is presenting anything, sexual content, adult content, to children, young children. I really feel that we need to maintain and keep and protect the innocence of our children for as long as we can, especially in today's culture, when they are exposed to so many dangers. So for me, I just do not believe that adult content needs to be presented to children. Let adults do what adults want to do, that's their business, but let's leave the children alone. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Ross, we're going to follow now, so we're going to have Phil Goldsmith, who's president of the library, he's going to make some remarks. We'll then have our solicitor make some comments, issue, kind of offer her opinion on some questions that were raised this evening, and then the board itself can comment and answer questions as well, and then we will conclude the Citizens Forum at that point. So Phil Goldsmith, president of Haverford Library.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. My name is Phil Goldsmith. I live at 312 Old Forest Road. I've lived there since 1974. My two daughters went to Haverford Schools, two of my grandchildren do, three others. My grandsons have misguided parents and they go to Radnor. I'm president of the Board of Trustees at Haverford Township Free Library. I'm here with several of my board members, our director, Sukrit Gasswami, several of our employees. I want to commend this commissioners for doing what you've done. This is really a terrific meeting, terrific. I suggest Commissioner Lucia take it on the road to Washington. The mission of the free library is to provide residence of the township as well as the public at large with access to the broadest range of resources, programs, and services. We believe in diversity, and different points of views are essential to fulfill the mission of the library. Our collection has more than 100,000 items, consisting of a wide range of topics with different points of view. We offer a wide array of book clubs and weekly programs and special events. This month alone, we have a spelling bee, metal ball training, which I have no idea what that is, pajama storytime for children, not adults, science towers, teen clubs, tie dyeing, a film screening, a live barber shop, music concern, and other activities. It's one heck of a great library for this community. We do not believe all our books or activities will be of interest to each person. To paraphrase Lincoln, you can please some of the people all the time, all the people, some of the people... some of the time, but not all the people all the time. Still, we and will continue to try our best to assess the needs and interests of a diverse community. It is not for us to dictate who reads what or who attends what. We are not a school, which students are required to attend and take certain courses. We are a public library that makes available a smorgasbord of offerings. People are free to pick and choose from our sampling. When it comes to children, we rely on their parents, not the librarians or others, to ultimately decide what they can feast on. This Saturday is Pride Day. There will be, contrary to someone saying, programs for adults. There will be a recital by the Anna Cruzus Choir. There will be a panel discussion entitled LGBTQ Across the Generations about how adults navigate society at different stages of their life cycles, and how one may generally, generally may differ from the other. And in the morning, we are having a drag queen storytime, which is intended to entertain children along with parents. It has nothing to do with sexual content. The books that the storyteller will be reading are King and Prince, Not Quite Natural, I'm Enough. Each one of those books is in our library now. Last year was the first time we had a drag queen storytime. I went, I was blown away. More than 200 children and parents attended the event, one of our largest events of the year. People have been showing pictures. Let me show you the picture I took last year. That is storytime, that's parents and children, Andy, having a good time at your library. We had virtually no complaints either prior to or after the event. Given its success, it was decided to hold it again this year. Fueled by national websites like actright.com and tfpstudentaction.com, we began to receive a slew of letters and phone calls. Make no mistake about it, some of the letters came from Haverford Township residents, most of which were heartfelt, and I thanked them for it, and I thanked those who came tonight to speak their views. Other emails and phone calls came from far away as Texas and Illinois. Some were reasonable, some obscene, some hateful. This is not the first time the library has been subject of controversy, I'm sure it won't be the last. Some of you might remember, when the circus came to town, we had two clowns that would do storytelling for several years, that was fine, until some people latched onto that, who were against the way elephants were treated at the zoo, at the circus, and came out and protested. We do not seek controversy, nor will we shrink from it. Our job is to assess the interests, desires, and needs of our patrons as a change over time. The best decider of what patrons want is patrons themselves, typified but white by what events they attend or books they seek to read. The basic issue before us is quite simple, but still very important. Who will decide what events and books children are permitted to read or attend? Their parents or others? We believe it should be a parent's, a family's choice. One of the things that disturbed me the most, ma'am, was what you said, and I wanna set the record straight. We do perform child clearance and criminal record checks.
I asked your librarian, who has...
I'm just telling you, I just want the facts to be, okay? I'm not blaming you, I'm just telling you the facts. I want everyone here to understand the facts. I don't want anyone to go out of here to say that we do not perform child clearance and criminal record checks on our employees. We are required by law and we will continue to follow the law.
The volunteers aren't...
As required by law. We are, we perform background and child clearance on our employees and those who will have routine interaction with children, which is defined as regular and repeated contact that is integral to a person's employment or reasonable responsibility. That is the law. Someone performing at a one-time storytime with parents in attendance does not fit into that category. And to single this individual out, I believe violates the township's nondiscriminatory policy, which specifically covers sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Besides, to select this specific individual for special treatment belies a common knowledge that we all know far too well. Perpetrators of child abuse come in all different uniforms, genders, and prestige. Regardless, we carefully vet our performers and volunteers, we do background checks on them. We know Saturday's performer very well, professionally and personally. We look forward to hearing him entertain. As for our programs, our program committee is always open to suggestions, and our meeting rooms are open for use by residents of Haverford College. There is no screening for political, religious, or ideological purposes. We spend our money wisely, report on it publicly at our monthly meetings, are carefully audited by our certified public accounts. We are grateful to the township for its contributions and support. We also raise money from our patrons, including one who has donated money to pay the $200 fee of this year's storyteller, and are gratified by other donations we have received. We are proud of the fact, despite our small footprint, we boast the largest circulation among Delaware County libraries. It is a wonderful library with great staff and patrons. Remember, it's called a free library, not only because you can borrow books at no charge, but because free is also a shorthand way of saying that freedom is best protected by having greater access to a variety of viewpoints, and by letting our patrons choose for themselves and for their children what they believe is appropriate. Thank you.
I first want to thank you all for the civil and respectful discussion that we had. It's impressive, I think Washington learned something from the civility that we all showed here this evening, so thank you on both sides of the issue. I would now ask our solicitor, Kelly Sullivan, to ask her to look at the issue of the, do it kind of an independent look at the background check issue, control that we really have as a Board of Commissioners over the, over the library board, and the freedom of speech issue. So Kelly, if you would give us your professional legal opinion.
Certainly. So initially, I would note to everybody that this is the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners, they do not control the library, they do not set the library policies or procedures or establish what they can do there. The Pennsylvania Library Code provides that the library is governed by a separate Board of Trustees. So this board cannot control the library programming. We did look at the background check and Mr., uh, the library director is correct, that they, background checks are required for volunteers that have regular, routine interaction with children, which is defined as regular and repeated contact with children. A one-time appearance as a volunteer for a one hour likely wouldn't need it under Child Protective Services law, but I understand that this gentleman already has a clearance or a clearance has been provided for this gentleman. And we think that, well, this board, of course, is without authority to control the library programming, but to shut down this library program would certainly have some implications of the First Amendment, freedom of assembly, freedom of speech, and that's what I have for the board.
Thank you, Kelly. So to me, it's, uh, you know, it's an issue of freedom of expression, speech, and assembly. I think it goes to the First Amendment rights that people have to, to meet at the library for as long as it's lawful and a nondiscriminatory purpose. And I had a conversation with Phil about this, and he assured me, as he said in his statement, the library is open for business for anybody, any issue, whether it be pro-life, pro-choice, pro-guns, anti-guns, pro-government, anti-government. Library is open for business to hear different and diverse opinions. That's their purpose, that's their responsibility. So I, for one, am not for suppressing any First Amendment rights. That's my personal opinion. I think other members of this board might have other opinions or want to share their view on this topic.
Mr. President? I just want to briefly make a statement. Obviously, everybody has had their opportunity to comment, and I, you know, I think it's important, if a commissioner would like to, I think it's important that we say it. I unequivocally support the LGBTQ community in Haverford Township. I will do my best, be an ally, friend. You deserve to be exactly who you are, you deserve to be seen, you deserve to be heard, you deserve to be loved. This storytime is meant to promote diversity, acceptance, and inclusion, meant to show the example that everyone is entitled to be treated with dignity and respect, and should feel comfortable to show the world who they are and who they want to be. I fully support this event at our library. We are a welcoming, diverse, and compassionate community, and we'll reign one before, during, and after this event. I do want to talk to those who have voiced opposition to this event. I tried to and will continue to engage anyone who wants to discuss their concerns in a respectful manner. If you insist on dehumanizing members of our community, then we probably won't get very far. But if you tell me that you love all people but, or that you have no problem with the gay community just, or that you have no, or that you don't care what people do with their kids, but why there, then I want to talk to you. Because if that is what you truly believe in the first part of those sentences, and I accept that most of you do, then I offer to you that the show must go on. I would ask you to consider walking in the shoes of your neighbors, coworkers, and fellow parents, try to see this from their perspective. Not in the shoes of a hypothetical individual, this event in no way changes your ability to continue to participate or not participate in whatever event you want to do in this community and with your kids. It is in no way a threat to your beliefs, religious or other one. I'd offer you to that opposition to this event is not based on righteousness, but rather a fear of something different or unknown. Recognize that even if you disagree, there are a lot of parents in this community who are the same people you sit with at Little League games that will also be taking their children to this event. Try to see these families as real people who you already know. Recognize that there is no agenda pushing them, but rather a decision they are making for their own children. I hope it helps take down the demonization of those in attendance, because these are very real people who live down the block from you. They are people that you see and interact with every day in the supermarket, in the bars, at the school bus stops, and yes, at the library. They are already a part of this community that you claim to love and feel that you are protecting. They already participate in the PTOs and swim in your pools. I'd ask you to think about why you should question or demand they change their decisions with their kids. I'd ask you to consider the role of public spaces in our community. They are not open to one particular group or limited to a certain set of beliefs. They are spaces that create a welcoming environment for everyone. Not everyone has to attend this event at the library, but everyone should have an event that makes them feel a part of their community's public space. Why shouldn't your neighbor have events that are consistent with who they are or who they want to be? Everything for this storytime is totally consistent with the library's policy and how this public space treats anyone and everyone. This event doesn't signify a preference towards a particular belief set, it merely signifies equality and equal access for everyone who already lives here. It is not taking anything away from you. You and I have used these public spaces for decades, at the library, at the gyms, at the ballfields, and in the meeting rooms. You will continue to. The public space remains yours, but it is also your neighbor's. I'd ask you to realize that it is okay if this particular storytime is not something that you're used to. Maybe it even makes you feel uncomfortable. That is okay. But I'd ask you to recognize that we as a society don't create different rules for some people because another group of people are uncomfortable with. We don't apply laws differently to an individual because they happen to identify with a particular group. In fact, we go to great lengths to assure that equal application of our laws regardless of that individual. We are not always successful, but anything contrary is antithetic to our ideals, our laws, and our constitution. I'm not telling you that you have to go to this event, but I would suggest trying to talk to someone from outside of a dogmatic belief set. I've always found that we can grow and understand when we talk to others. Talk to someone who is comfortable with this event. Try to understand why they are comfortable without reflexively demonizing their ability to parent their child. Try to understand how they view it without the goal of changing their mind. And if you are unwilling to do that, then I'd ask that you question if you are really okay with the LGBTQ community. And most importantly, I'd ask that you recognize that the performer for this particular event is also a human being worthy of dignity and respect. That is true and consistent with the ideals of this country, that everyone is created equal. For many of you, it is consistent with your faith that we are all created in the image of God. This is really important. The performance is no different than me. We both have a body and soul, we both have hopes and dreams, we both have emotions and feelings, I just happen to be wearing a suit. It does not make me any better or any worse, it simply makes us two people. Even if you disagree, try to keep in mind that if your stated goal is a better community or a better state of humanity that has never been achieved through demonizing someone. I'd suggest to you that calling anyone names or threatening is not exhibiting mercy or serving as a peacemaker. And I'd ask that if you insist on opposing the event, you find a way to do so in a peaceful manner. I grew up in Havertown, taught by my mother, my father, teachers, coaches, and yes, priests and nuns, to love thy neighbor, to reach out to those who sought, others sought to exclude, to accept people's differences and love them regardless, to lend a hand to the downtrodden and to treat all people with dignity and respect. It wasn't about what was on the outside that counted, it was about what was on the inside. My mother taught me to stick up for those who were mocked or put down, she taught me to see beauty in every person regardless of color, gender, creed, or sexual orientation. She taught me to always be kind. My parents in this community taught me to be strong and to always be willing to speak up for what I believe is right. They taught me to always consider what it means to walk in another's shoes. The value of children seeing this event is totally consistent with how I was raised and how I hope to raise my children in this community. I fully support this event at our library. Love is love.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, Andy, I've heard a lot of things here about prejudice and things like that, and I don't think that that's what this is all about at all. And I don't know what the... This is about our children, and I believe the people out there who spoke against this library, I agree with them 100%. They should not have this on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's discussion isn't about cross-dressing, it is about suppressing one group's right to speak. It is about allowing parents to take their children to a library event even when another group has different beliefs and does not approve. It is likely that those who opposed the library event would react differently if this were a presentation about the concept of family that they cherish, and that the protesters were LGBTQ individuals who demanded that the event be canceled because they believe that a family can be headed not only by a man and a woman, but also by two men or two women, all of whom have the same right to marry. I spoke about intolerance last November, imploring my colleagues and the residents of this township to be aware of and to consider the perspectives and the religious views of others, not just those of the majority, when planning township events. And with all due respect, not one person, not one commissioner, and not one resident of this township has ever publicly spoken in support of my position. Today, we see one example of what happens when we allow intolerance to fester. We see it in speakers who believe that their beliefs and their agendas must be everyone's, and that everyone must raise their children in the way that they approve. Tonight, we heard from some who, rather than saying, no, I'm not taking my child to this event, say, no one should be allowed to take this child, their children, to these events because we do not approve. What is next? No one should not, should be, no one should be... No one should not, should be, no one should be allowed to pray to a different god from the protesters, or that no one should be allowed to speak about other controversial topics because the protesters do not approve of their beliefs. We must encourage and cultivate a spirit of tolerance in our community and not serve as unappointed judges and juries of everyone's belief. To paraphrase Martin Luther King Jr., "We must learn to live together as brothers or perish together as fools." We must embrace tolerance and respect for each other in our library and in our community. A cross dresser reading stories to three-year-olds is not a threat to our society. Intolerance is. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, I got shown up by my son. I also live at 2109 Sheson Avenue. I was very proud of my son, Jack, who got up and spoke before because I think he really, he tried his best to explain to folks that this is really, at the end of the day, about people, about people accepting and not fearing people that aren't like them. There are, there's an opportunity in Drag Queen Story Hour to see something ridiculous, to see Mrs. Doubtfire tell a story. And that story is about a little unicorn that thought it was a whale, and then it found out it was a unicorn. And it turned out the world wasn't upside down, and actually, the world got to be a better place because they found out there were other people like them. There's no place more lonely than when you yourself think you're the only person dealing with something. The issues that, I had the great experience, great experience eight years ago of convincing members of this board that creating the Human Relations Commission in Haverford Township would be a great step forward for us. And there was a lot of fear about it. There was a lot of concern about it. There was a lot of concern it was going to screw up the business community. There was a lot of concern that it was going to advance an agenda. And the fact is, eight years later, we're just a better township for it. And I just, I encourage everybody, if the library isn't the place that can make us think and can give us the opportunity every once in a while to be uncomfortable, then it's not doing its job. There are numerous things in this library that I'm sure, if I looked closely enough, I would find issue with. There's a copy of Mein Kampf in that library, Das Kapital. There are books written by Donald Trump, any Rambo movie, any CD of music from the 80s, anything Quentin Tarantino ever did, or any book ever written by Anne Rann. I got a serious problem with all those. I'm sure other people would find a problem with the Quran that they have there. I'm sure other people would have a problem with The Origin of the Species. They'd have a problem with anything in there. They'd have a problem with the Feminine Mystique. They'd have a problem with the King James Bible. Okay? The day that I take my complaint about the contents of the library's program or the books that are on its shelf and threaten its funding is, I promise to you, the last day I will ever serve in public office in this township. I stand by the library. I obviously stand behind the LGBT community, and I ask for all this. Just open your minds a little. It's all I ask. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else like to speak from the board?
I'd like to offer my thanks to both sides here. A long time ago, I graduated from college, went in the military, took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States to allow anybody to speak their right mind, and offered to serve, protect. We took the similar oath, all of us up here, to support and defend the Constitution of not only the United States, but the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the laws of Haverford Township. I sense here, I welcome both sides of the argument here. I think when we talk about intolerance, there's intolerance both ways if you don't agree. So I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank everybody that came out to offer their opinion because in our country, that is your right, it is your duty to do so, whether you believe in one side or the other. We fully, all of it, have the right to stand up here and express your opinion without bias, without fear of retribution. So I thank all of you who spoke on both behaves of this issue. Based upon the numbers, I keep a tally, it's a closely, it was a closely called thing. It was, you know, the number of people spoke was even, and I appreciate the fact that we live in a country where you're allowed to express your opinion. Intolerance goes both ways. So I offer all of us to be tolerant of each side. We all respect the opinions of the other side, and we move forward. That's what our great country is about. So thank you all for coming this evening and expressing your opinion, no matter what it was, and it's valued no matter which way you go. So thank you very much to all of you.
Yeah, so I agree with Bill in what a great country we live in. My parents are immigrants. Different. I am Latino, so I'm probably the only non-white on the board here in front of you. So I take the, my oath very seriously. When I raised my hand and I said I would support the Constitution of the state of Pennsylvania as well as the Constitution of the United States, I take that oath very seriously. And so it is, it is not up to, it is not up to this board to decide what the library's programming is, but I will not, I'm not going to stop the library from doing what they do. I believe in free speech, and it is, it would go against my oath to try to stop somebody from speaking their mind, and I won't, I won't do that. So that is all.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have it?
I just, I want to also thank everyone who contacted me via email or called me to discuss this issue. I, I do agree, and obviously, we support the First Amendment to the United States to allow free speech, but there are, the other side of that is, you have the right to disagree with that and protest peacefully or make your viewpoints known as you did this evening. And I don't view that as being prejudiced. I view that as you just have concerns, and you voice those concerns, and you have a right to voice those concerns, and I'm proud of the way you did that this evening. So thank you very much. I'm also still willing to discuss this with anyone who wants to meet with me or call But I do support this event. I think that it needs to happen, and we don't have a right to tell the library not to do it. It's their prerogative. I think all of us, in our families and friends, know someone who is gay or bisexual, and I have, I have it in my family. And so we accept them in our families, and we should accept them as, as Mr. McCloskey stated, everywhere else in our township. They need to be treated with dignity and respect. You can disagree. I understand that, and I do agree with your rights to do so. But, but events like this, it's not up to this township, it's up to the library. And you have a right not to send your children if you don't want to go. Those that want to attend, they have their right to do so as well. But this was the most civil meeting I have ever seen on this topic, and you should be very proud of the way you all handled yourselves, pro and con, on this event this evening. I can't thank you from the bottom of my heart for the way you handled this. This was, I think, a model for the rest of the country because this, this issue is probably going to be debated further in this country. And the way you residents handled this was just an example of how great this township is. So thank you so much.
I can't be left out of it.
Okay. I thought you were.
Dr. Mr. McCloskey spoke eloquently. I fully support the library. I think the library has wonderful leadership. It's a free library. Diverse expressions. I understand people not approving of a drag queen storytime, but a lot of people do. And as Mr. Goldsmith showed, 200 people came last year. Most of them thoroughly enjoyed it. There were no complaints about it. It's a part of our community. There's a lot of people in our community who support it. I understand other people don't, but we're a diverse community, and this is the library's indication of that. The woman who spoke about not feeling it should be in the children's section, I believe it's not going to be.
Can it be in a different location? Phil?
Yes. I meant to raise up, there's a woman that was sitting here, I think she may have left.
She's still here. Right back. Yeah.
I thought you raised a very good point.
Can you go to the microphone?
About why don't we have it in the community room? Frankly, that's where I wanted to have it. That's where we're going to have it. But on the advice of others, for safety and capacity reasons, we decided to move it back up into the children's room. It's only going to take an hour. People won't know it's there, so they don't have to worry about walking up, up there. But I think your, your point was a legitimate one. It's one that I frankly prefer, but on reflection, consulting with others, we can hold it upstairs as opposed to downstairs. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other comments from the board? Well, that will conclude our item, agenda item number 18, the continuation of the Citizens' Forum. Now turn, does anybody have any new business under, and item 19? Okay, we'll now get out of the business. Commissioner Aliva.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee and the Commissioner Ad-Hoc Committee reviewed and scored the responses to the RFP for the, a planning consultant to update the township's comprehensive plan. Unfortunately, when they reviewed the, I was not able to attend, so I want to thank my colleagues who did attend for reviewing those plans. The top three highest-scoring candidates, CA's Planning, Thomas Committee Associates, and Urban Research and Development Corporation, were interviewed by the committees on June 4th, and a recommendation will be made to the Board of Commissioners at the July meeting. Just let me real quickly give you a comprehensive timeline. September 2018, Board of Commissioners moves forward with the comp plan as a single municipality. November 2018, Comp Plan Steering Committee identifies goals and objectives for RFP. December 2018, Commissioner Ad-Hoc Committee for the Comp Plan formed. January 2019, Steering Committee slash Board of Commissioners Ad-Hoc creates the RFP. February 11, 2019, RFP was issued. March, the proposals were due. March through April 2019, Committee members individually review and scored submissions. April 30, Committee meets to compare scores, selection of the three highest-scoring firms. June 4, select consultants interviewed by the Committee, Urban Research and Development. All the other committees, I mean, the companies were reviewed, and we will eventually, I think in the July meeting, make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as to which company we chose. So that's it for the, for the comp plan. One other thing, or two other things, I think. Westgate Trail is complete, and I believe Thursday, is Tim Denny still here? No, he left. June 20 at 7:00 PM, we're going to have a, like ribbon cutting, a small ceremony for the Westgate Trail. I want to thank the Westgate Hills Civic Association and all the volunteers and throughout the township and the residents of Westgate that came out and helped create that trail and supported the efforts. It was quite impressive how the, that community, our community, came together even for that. So that trail is, it is open, and it's, if you haven't walked it, I suggest you do it. It's, it's a little rustic at times, but it's a beautiful trail. Well, Willand Hill Lane and Glendale, we're still working on creating that painted island there. We had some issues with the layout that PennDOT approved, and Danny's working with the Township Engineer to come up with a new concept plan, so we hope to have that, I would say soon, Dan? Within the next couple of weeks, I would think, so we could begin that process as well. Again, thank you.
Commissioner Aliva?
Well, I just want to start by saying, oh, it was on. It was just a thing was coming. Okay, I'm sorry. So I just want to start by saying, Dan, I, I'm sorry if you misunderstood my, I support you in, in your, in what you did for the, for the township to include those of other faiths who were not represented. You have my support 100%. And sorry, you did not, you know, we did not, the board didn't say that to you ahead of time, but you, you do have our support in, in any of those, you know, to include other religions' beliefs in, in the township where you may, may have felt that you were not. Also, I spent, I spent last week in Erie, Pennsylvania, in an economic development conference, and there was a lot of, a lot of talk of inclusion, diversity in communities. And if anybody knows anything about Erie, it's a town that was dumping for a long time, and now it's making a resurgence. And I see Haverford Township much that way, where, where you need to start bringing in minority ownership, things like that, which, which Erie did and really worked out very well for them. So as we're talking about diversity and inclusion, we need to start thinking about that in, in the business sector also as we move forward. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Aliva? Mr. McCloskey?
I didn't know we were speaking again, so I'll just say I'll see everyone on Saturday. Now we have no choice, right?
Mr. Siegel.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Aliva. I just want to clarify, I, this board has always supported the need for recognition of other religions and beliefs, but I think what we also need is that the board needs to make the public aware that it is a board commitment, and that's where I think we can do better. I speak from my perspective, which religiously is different from the vast majority of the board and this community, and it is important that we as leaders give that message to the community that every religion, every group is welcome. And that's really my point. I think it's really important for us. It's also, when you listen here, and people who know me know that I, if you didn't know this already, have some very strong views on issues, but when we talk about being a commissioner, I always say, we don't get to address those issues here because you elect us to make sure your trash is collected, your yard waste is picked up, your streets are plowed, and your leaves are collected. But at times, we do see national issues come into play here, and we've seen that tonight, and we've seen it in the past on guns. We see it tonight on First Amendment issues. We saw it during a very intense period of debate about the Human Relations Commission, and we've seen it on a variety of other issues. And I can say that I'm proud that this is a board that regardless of our political affiliation, has done the right thing again and again and again. We can still do better, but we are moving in the right place and in the right direction. I've said, and people have heard it privately, that at times, I don't know, we feel like I'm part of this community and I have lived here over 33 years. And that's part of the need to make certain that we all feel welcome. I don't know how else we do that as a board. I welcome ideas from the public, whether it would help the board to have its own diversity and inclusion committee, I don't know. I throw that out there. But the public needs to know, you know, you go through my neighborhood, you see how diverse we are. You see how, you know, different this township is from the one I moved into 33-plus years ago. But I want to thank the board for always doing the right thing and allowing the debate with. which has always been civil, even when we disagree, as some of us did tonight. Thank you.
Mr. McGarty?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, make it short and sweet. Couple meetings ago, I mistakenly, uh, because of some homeowners not taking proper care of their property, I used the word scumbags. And I was, I received a lot of hell about that from my wife, who was here tonight. And I was hoping she didn't leave so she could hear me say this. Because she said, "You've got to be man enough to apologize." And I also apologized to the Haverford Township Police Force because they didn't like me using that word because it's used in another community, which is not, not as good as our community. So I just want you to know, I apologize for that. And, thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Been a long night. We passed over the discussion of the Brookline School. We'll be back on that next month. I, I do think we can't make it a, uh, a decision between renovation and demolish. I think we also need to bring in the library again next month in a discussion of, are we going to move the library to that location? And if we do move it, will they renovate the building or not renovate the building? But that's for next month. The Penfield Civic Association is having its annual July 4th celebration. It's going to be at The Grange on July 4th. It begins at 9:30. There's bike parade, there's rides on the, uh, Brookline Fire Department fire trucks, face painting, a lot of activities. It's a great day. Come out and celebrate having to be, um, the opportunity we had to have this discussion tonight starts with July 4th. That's all I have.
I have a similar announcement. The Hilltop Civic Association does their July 4th parade. It will be on July 4th this year with the traditional bike ride and bike decorating contests and all the fun events, starting at the Bonnar Fire Company and then migrating down after the parade to the Hilltop Field. It's a great day. It's a great tradition. Dan, I apologize if we've never done anything. I, I, I think this board is, is very tolerant. I, I don't know about anybody else, but an attack on a church is an attack on a church. I don't really, what denomination is. I, I always go back to a priest. I, I'm a Catholic and, and he said, "Just never forget that the, the Jesus that we pray to is Jewish carpenter." So we're not that dissimilar. We just go on a different days, the way he said. And my grandfather, who was, my last name is Wexler, he came from Germany. He converted to Maria Kennedy from, from Ireland and we all became Catholics at that point, is what my grandmother, she said. And it's a shame that the Hun name is the one that's, that sticks because she only had sons. And, and so the Wexler name proliferated on and, and they all, they married, one married an O'Sullivan and the other one married a Bates. So, uh, over two sons. But I think it's a great community that we do live in. I think we do support each other. I think all the faith here, when we have, uh, the interfaith community that Tim heads up, I think it's, uh, has shown throughout a long time that it's a very tolerant community. So that's all I have, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Vice President Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. Just, uh, two points. One, um, I, I have four children and, um, none of them, they're all too old to have had the opportunity to go to Drag Queen Story Hour or be exposed to it, depending on your perspective. But, um, they spend a lot of time with a purple dinosaur and four freaks named Tinky Winky, La La, Dipsey, and Poe, who were post-apocalyptic surrealistic beings with televisions embedded in their stomachs. If my son, Jack, is any indication, I think despite their exposure to that, they turned out okay. And I want to explain, and this is going to sound very unusual, I, and I, I have been since 2011 so strongly in support of the LGBT community. And I want you to understand how that comes from my faith. And it, and the story is this. And seven years ago tonight, I was writing my mother's eulogy. And one of the stories I told in her eulogy was how deeply faithful and Catholic she was. And sometime when I was in my 30s, my mom was having to Thanksgiving and staying at our home with my dad, a couple friends of theirs. It was a man who'd been friends for years with the family and he was bringing for the first time the man who would ultimately be his husband. And they were invited to Thanksgiving and they were part of our family, they were part of our family's celebration. And by then, I'd been taught eight years of Jesuit, eight years of IHM, four, three years of Augustinian teaching. I was certainly far more liberal than my mother. And I thought I could catch her on faith and say, "Gee, Mom, how is that? How do you reconcile with, you know, your strong views on things like that?" And she said, "Larry Holmes." She said, "Jesus counted among his friends and the people that he had in his home, a tax collector, Roman tax collector, a lever, and a prostitute." And he said, she said, "The three most reviled people in biblical times. And if they can be his friends and be in his home, then everybody is invited to mine." And I never forgot that. It has driven... It has driven my passion on this issue. So I do appreciate everybody coming out and saying what they said, but I don't apologize for my unabashed view on this. And, uh, I thank the library for its brave stand and for continuing to be a place where people might learn something new. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have one suggestion for the board's consideration, uh, we can talk about later, but, um, when Jen Leith, uh, spoke tonight as Chair of the Human Relations Committee, Commission, she had to speak as a registered, uh, registered speaker. And I think it would be appropriate to, uh, we created another agenda item for any chairman of, or chairperson of our, one of our boards or commissions that wants to present, have their own separate agenda item, uh, maybe before or after the Citizens' Forum. So...
So moved.
Yeah, so I think, is everybody okay with that? Because they shouldn't have to be speaking in the registered speaker's section. So, uh, just some quick announcements about some upcoming community activities. This Sunday, uh, June 16th, The Grange is offering free tours for all dads on Father's Day. Saturday, June 22nd, is Harvtown, Haverford Town Irish Festival will be held on the grounds of the Manoa Shopping Center. And on Saturday, June 29th, we'll have a free, another free shredding event, which was hugely successful last time. In fact, so successful, it was, I think, by 10 o'clock, it was, a lot of people were upset because they couldn't, um, utilize the shredding. So we've added, added additional truck. And the, uh, the event is open to township residents only and limited to four boxes per person. And once the truck is full, the event ends. So I urge you to get there on time. And what time is that start, Amy? Is it, is it 9 o'clock? Okay, 9 o'clock, yeah. 9 to 12 on June 29th. And I think that's, uh, I think that's it. That's all my, that's all my comments. Any other, any other business to come before? Or, if not, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.